Meeting of the Arlington City Council, Mayor Rich Nagel will now be presiding. At this time, I'll call a meeting to order, and would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and again, welcome everyone. If you were here and didn't sign in on the clipboard on the end of the table there, please do so. Please do so, excuse me. At this time, we're gonna move item eighteen on the agenda up on the agenda to hold that next, and that would be the resolution seventeen dash twenty-two. This is a resolution approving the app, or I'm sorry, appointing new member to the Arlington City Council. Resolution seventeen dash twenty-two. Is there a motion to introduce that?
So do we have to make a motion to make changes on that?
We can do that if you feel comfortable. I was gonna get into that after, but you'd sooner do that now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm on a hold off on roll call until our new council member can join in. So at this time, we'll move down to the approve the agenda and agenda additions. Any changes in the agenda?
Moving seventeen?
Moving seventeen.
To three A or something?
That would actually right under, right under one. Eighteen would go right under the number one. Resolution seventeen dash twenty-two.
Actually, it will go under approving the agenda.
Yeah.
Oh.
So it'll be like three A, like.
Okay, whatever.
We can move roll call to three B.
Okay. I may not do in the order you're saying, but I get what you're saying.
Yeah.
All right. And then also, item number twenty-one, move up right behind or right after the resolution. Any other changes in the agenda? I'm gonna request that items B, C, and D from the consent agenda be held off to a future meeting. I have a number of items that need to be clarified in those, and I will get together with administration and do that. Items B, C, and D removed from the consent agenda. And that is all. Anything else from anybody? Okay, motion to approve the agenda with the changes?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by council member Sharpie, second by council member Morgan, to approve the agenda with the noted changes. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carried. Okay, now we can get into the others. Is that right, Michelle? Is that what you're comfortable? All right. Resolution seventeen dash twenty-two, resolution accepting or appointing a new member to the Arlington City Council. That being David Meyer. Someone wish to introduce that resolution?
I'll introduce resolution seventeen dash twenty-two, resolution appointing a new member to the city council, the mayor.
Second.
Resolution seventeen dash twenty-two introduced by council member Batch, or second by council member Thomas, and it is a resolution appointing a new member to the Arlington City Council. Vote by roll call, council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Thomas.
Yes.
Council member Batch.
Yes.
Council member Sharpie.
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, the resolution is adopted. Flip back to the front, and we will have the swearing in. Dave, would you come forward, please?
Yeah. You can tilt the, go the other way. Yep, and Rich, if you can back up a little bit.
So do you want her hands raised?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. And Rich, need to go back a little further. Okay. Hang on here. Reason we do this is if you're talking, then your mouth is open when I take the picture. Or you're looking down at your paper, so. Have you just looked straight ahead at Rich? Perfect, thank you.
I, Dave Meyer.
I, Dave Meyer.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the Charter of the City of Arlington.
And the Charter of the City of Arlington.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties evolving upon me.
The duties evolving upon me.
As a council member of the City of Arlington.
As a council member of the City of Arlington.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations, welcome.
Thank you.
And sign these, sign those both. And then you keep one, I keep one. All right, roll call. Are there any roll call?
No. No.
Council member Thomas.
Here.
Council member Morgan.
Here.
Council member Meyer.
Here.
Council member Sharpie.
Here.
Council member Batch.
Here.
The five members are here. The council is at full force again. All right, moving down to the consent agenda. Two items on the consent agenda, item A, approval of bills, item E, approval of the February sixteenth, twenty twenty-two special city council minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by council member Morgan, second by council member Batch. To approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Motion carried. Okay, item number five, addressing the council. Is there anyone here this evening that wishes to address the council at this time? Kurt, you just wanna make sure that's on, and then pull it close, pull it close to you.
Green light.
Name and address.
First name is Curtis, last name is Reitz, three oh nine Fourth Avenue Northwest here in Arlington. I'll keep it short. I typed it up so I'd stay on track.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor and council, at your last meeting, most of you know the, there are people in the audience, I don't think they were here to stop retirements or stop resignations because the vote you guys made was correct. I think what they were trying to tell you is the unhappiness with the council allowing disrespect in the workplace, which causes resignation and retirements. You please need to take note of that. When somebody turns in a resignation or resigns, it's too late. It's way too late. Most people know when somebody turns in their retirement or resignation, their decision has already been made, and many times, it's too late. As I just said, it's too late to discuss the issues that have led up to their decision. I do have a question, and I don't expect an answer, and I'm just addressing the mayor because that's the procedure here. How does a resignation that is sent in on a Sunday night appear in our local paper in print in a detailed article that includes many quotes from the actual resignation itself, all within four days of being sent to the council prior to a council meeting and even acting on the resignation? Really ironic, really ironic. Seems there's a lack of control and confidentiality among our office staff with information that should go to the council first and not to the editor of our local paper. Very, very unethical. I watched the council meeting videos on YouTube and cannot believe the disrespect, interruptions, and rude comments that were publicly made during discussion with and towards the fire department previous fire chief. Again, what a lack of ethics and professionalism. It's a shame. People are watching this on YouTube. Seems or appear that issues of managerial or administrative misbehavior and misconduct are taking place in front of our council, and the council is afraid to, or lacks the control of its staff. One would think that this is a clear violation of a respectful work environment. Another question, I don't expect an answer, just addressing the mayor. Who is running our city, and when will the council, again, gain control back of the operations of our city and stop acting on manipulated information from staff and certain council members? Any questions? Give me a call. Most of you know where I live. I lived in Arlington for sixty-four years. I lived at the same address for forty-two years. Won't link to anybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kurt. Is there anyone else?
These are for the council members?
And Kim, please hold it to five minutes or less?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So I am Kim Quast, a lifelong resident of the City of Arlington. I do have a history with Arlington EMS system. I was a previous member of the Arlington Area Ambulance, therefore an employee of the city. I am here to address what I feel was an appalling display of disrespect in the workplace at the January eighteenth city council meeting. There needs to be a public apology from our city administrator, Amy Newsom, to the former fire chief, John Zaski, for the public humiliation, the hostile working environment, the manipulation, the unethical conduct, and the lack of transparency she has had with our former fire chief, Zaski, as well as our council members and the mayor. The respectful workplace policy that Administrator Newsom references during her public display of unprofessionalism and humiliation can be found in the Personnel Policy Handbook on page twenty-seven, section fourteen. Administrator Newsom is also in violation of the City Work Rule and Code of Conduct on page five, section two. The final violation the administrator is guilty of is in regards to the city personnel communication, found on page fifty-three to fifty-four, section twenty-seven point four. This meeting was a public display of workplace violence that was broadcast on a social media platform. Mayor Nagle, you are also at fault for not maintaining proper meeting etiquette at the January eighteenth city council meeting, set forth by the Roberts Rule of Order. Where is the accountability here? Is there no integrity within our city government? We, as a community, need to do better. We, as a community, demand accountability. Thank you, mayor and council.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on to communications.
Say, just for a moment, obviously, hearing this, I guess I would move to have a committee look into, you know, this situation.
Can we take this up on our new business?
Yep.
Just remind me. Communications. And I believe all homeowners received that also. Any questions on that? Hearing none, we'll move on to item eight, the annual report by the Arlington Historical Society representative Dwight Krbitsky. Good evening, Dwight.
Our report's always very short, so we don't have a lot to cover. The only couple of things that I wanted to do was talk about, and you got in the survey report, was that we had a very bad leak, actually a year ago, yesterday. And thanks to Kirby Whitworth, thanks to our Amy, things went very well as far as getting everything cleaned up. I brought the city a fantastic job of, I know Amy probably got tired of hearing, asking, answering my emails, because I was anxious to get going. We had planned to open right away the first Saturday of May, which has been our usual opening time. But unfortunately, because of the flood, and because of the time that it took to get everything cleaned up, we weren't open until the end of May. But I do wanna thank Amy for her efforts. And I'm gonna say that you've got a very great, some wonderful people that are working here at the city. Kirby did a fantastic job coming in that night, getting the water turned off, getting the equipment to get the water cleaned up. We had approximately four inches of water on the floor. But anyway, he just did a magnificent job, so that really worked out. Other than being late and opening up, that really worked out well. So as far as the rest of the, you can read the reports yourself, I'm not gonna dwell on any of the things that I wanna touch that. We were open for twenty-four days. Our agreement with the city requires, I believe, twelve dates for the year. So hopefully, we're open, which was a little bit less than in the previous years. Attendance was still down, probably mainly because of the COVID situation. We did require masks at the beginning, but by, and it was also hard to get people to wear masks. I would say the vast majority came in without, but we did require masks. The, we added some collections this year from different people. The part of the Spanish estate, we had a couple of large boxes of things that came from like Spanish, some different pictures and things that we didn't have in our place, and it was really nice to be able to get that. And last fall, we got a large book from the Harbor Historical Society. It's a ledger book that came from Citizens Bank here in Arlington. It's the first bank here in Arlington. It only lasted a couple of years, but it probably was the impetus for getting the rest of the banking system going here in town. But anyway, we have that. That's gonna be on display this year. We're gonna have a few items from that display. Other than that, we lost two of our original members. Kurt Bader, Greg Goblich, there's a page in there for both of them. I counted on him greatly, mainly because I could bounce ideas off of them, and they could see the things that I wasn't looking at. So that was absolutely fantastic to have those two people around, even when they were both confined to the nursing home. And, but it was still, it was still great for me to be able to talk to them and get their ideas. The last part of it was the income and expenses, you can see what it cost. One of the things I wanna point out is that Greg and I had talked many times about what's gonna happen in the future, and he always thought we should have at least a ten thousand dollar area where that we could always fall back on in case some of the years we had greater expenses than normal. And so we were able to do that. I wish you were here to see that. I know you have the old smiles. So you can read the report on your own. If there's anything in particular that you saw in there that you'd like more information on, I'm willing to answer it tonight, or you can contact me. We plan to open the first Saturday in May, like our normal time. We're working on the exhibits right now. One of the exhibits will be in coordination with St. Paul's Lutheran. They're celebrating their one hundred and fiftieth year. We have a number of pictures. We have some things that they don't have, so we'll have those on display. We will also have, like I said, from the Citizens Bank, and we're tossing pictures of the Arlington Free Reed, and a little bit of information on the Free Reed, and we're working on a couple of other items. So each year, we change, we try to follow, and there's like anniversaries or some special event going on in Arlington. We try to be a part of that. As you know, on the cover, we have the picture from Brown's. We were able to at least put together a poster. The poster shows a lot of stuff. If you have, if you get a chance to get over to Brown's and see it, it shows some things from the early, early history of when Brown's first started. So any questions? I can take them now. If not, please contact me.
Thanks. Thank you.
It's fun. This is fun. My degree is in history, and now I have a chance to play with it. I do appreciate what the city has done for us with the building and the things that we're able to do. Thanks to the city.
Thank you, Dwight. Appreciate it. Appreciate your group and their active roles that they play. Thank you. Item nine, people's service, twenty twenty-one annual report. Lee Ortloff. Good evening, Lee.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, House, and Senate. Wanted to do a kind of two-part report here. One will be the end of the year review, and the other will be kind of the goals we kind of got set for next year. When we start off. There, is that better?
There you go.
The mic wasn't on. So we started out with, I'm on the other page. That's just our monthly report. There we are.
There we go.
Started out, we had a lot of issues. We were budgeting for the water treatment plant. Ended up working on getting together with the city council and engineers or whatever, and kind of put together a plan of what it would take to rehab it. Went back and forth quite a bit on it. It went out for bids. It's been at bids. I've had a lot of people in there looking at stuff to get, find out what the needs are, not the wants are of it, you know? So a lot of stuff we're not doing. There's a lot of cosmetics and some valves and some control issues. Just pretty much upgrading that, the medium, the drainage. So, and then in the water side, with our water system, we finally, this early spring, had all the water meters changed out. Whole city's a hundred percent auto-reed. There's nothing left. Last year, we had a total of six water line breaks in town, two water mains and four service lines. And then we've been working on, I did a presentation about the diamond maps. We almost completed with our whole layout of that thing. So far, it's proven to be a real useful tool. Whenever we have an issue or something, and Amy says, come look this up, we can look it up, and we can see we're watering sewer with data metacraft coming to town. It's been very beneficial, finding out where things lay and that, and we've been involved a lot with that. As the mayor requested, we were able to change all the fire hydrants and color code them instead of them all being red to the size of the water pipe in town. And once we get this completed, which we're almost there, we're gonna have some nice maps made. Some bigger ones like what's on the wall, and we can break them out from water to sewer, and we can give sections, because it's all GIS, to the fire department, and they can, yeah. So I think it'll be really nice, and they'll be updated. And that's the nice thing about it, is we have everything here. We can constantly update it, so. Well, number two is rehab. It should be in good shape for many years to come. It pumped, it was pumping at eight hundred and twenty-five gallons a minute, and it went down to five fifty. When they pulled it, there were sples in the pipe. The pump, the motor, or pump assembly is solid brass down there. There was hardly anywhere on it. So, like I said, they should last for a long time. We shouldn't have any issues with it. One thing at the end of the year, we got true up on our budget. We ended up spending money to fill our water treatment chemicals up from that, because as of the first of the year, chemical costs, the Hocken chemical is just going up crazy. So you would've had like a twenty-five hundred dollar refund, but I think you paid like seven hundred and eleven dollars. It was the cost to fill everything up. Like a cylinder chlorine is going up like eighty, eighty dollars a cylinder. It's crazy. So we decided to fill up, otherwise it's just gonna cost more than it is coming here, so. Lift stations, generators. All annual maintenance was performed on all lift station and generators. There was no real big issues with them. Everything was running pretty good. We had problems with generators running poorly in the springtime. No way to spend some money on that one. As time went on and the heat went on, it turned out that we had bad fuel. The fuel was only a little over a year old. And we had the, started on problems with the big diesel generator at the wastewater plant and shut off, and it backfired. It was like, wow, that's impossible for a diesel generator to backfire. I was talking to a friend of mine, and he said, well, he must've got a tank mixed and has had some gasoline in it. You know what I mean? When they come and you're supposed to dedicate a tank, there must've been some re, you know, they loaded eight hundred gallons, a couple hundred gallons or a hundred gallons of gas in it. So we didn't. Got them ran down, refilled, put treatment in it, and they've been running good ever since, so at least we got that problem solved. We had insurance claim on Seventh Avenue Lift Station. It took a hit with some kind of electrical spike, whether it was lightning or something happened in the lines. It took out the control floats, transducer, controller, and everything was replaced under insurance claim, so. And it makes it all new and modern. The equipment was getting old anyway, so it was, you know, a good thing, you know? It should last. Wastewater plant, as you all know, we did an energy audit on that with Minnesota Rural Water. We discovered there were still some significant savings that could be done on the blowers down there. So we brought it up council here, and we, and we made the decision to purchase that new tri-lob blower. It finally showed up last week. It's been, last weekend, it was out on a ship somewhere in December, just waiting to get unloaded. And I was called yesterday, no, no, this morning, about a guy that's gonna do the install, so he's gonna mine that up with me, and then we'll get that going and get that done. Then at that time, we also decided to do the back blowers that we were using to put D O control on them. They're, 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 they're running right now in the winter time at a minimum. We can't turn them down in the winter, where we were stuck at a certain rate. So we were having some good energy savings off of that, because I think there was what, eighteen hundred dollars to do that. That paid for itself quick, yeah? And, and we also have this year budgeted to change all the lights to LED in twenty twenty-two. It was like thirty-two, thirty-three hundred dollars. So we're gonna get that done this year, so. In the wastewater treatment plant, we replaced the tractors, the tires on the tractor for hauling sludge. And wastewater issues, we had issues with rags blocking the sewer line. Me and Amy went to the same place, places two times, because there was only a line that went out, but these are the people on it. Then we finally ended up with a sewer backup in somebody's home. Luckily, there was somebody home and noticed that there was no damage. It was coming up in their basement. And then they called us, and they had a guy trying to get the sewer out, and he said, let's not block, pulled that lid and blew the rags again. After that, there were some nasty letters went out. Issue stopped. So let's hope the message is there, and this don't happen anymore. Because we had four times there was rags in here, three times we jetted it, so. Yeah, and there never was an issue before, so, yeah. We disposed of the old BioCube equipment that was in the building over by the Highway Five Lift Station. There were some major, major repairs that needed to be done with it. I've been here since two thousand and fifteen. It's never worked really well. And then all we did was get smell of complaints, or complaint smells from it. You'd smell sewage here all the time. So what's the difference? The smell makes it down to the wastewater plant, and who cares? Nobody's out there to complain except us, so, you know what I mean? So, so that's all gone, and the city's using that building for storage, so. Might as well use it for something. It's, it's got water, it's got heat and stuff, so. Then we also had, we dealt, and a UO part of this, all the multiple Then we also had, we dealt, and a U L part of this, all the multiple issues with Northland drying. You know, and that was kind of a hot topic this last year. Worked with a lot of them this last fall and uh November. Trying to get some issues resolved. They've been cleaning up their yard, re- re- landscaping their yard so the water flow's different. And we looked at some different approaches. I'd like to see them abandoning that tank that they have there. Because that's where the juice goes in and the sun cooks it. It's like a boiling pot of stew and that's what smells so bad out there. I think there's other means from that. They're using that slab, there's another building they can go in. It's just drippings off a trailer, what they say, that can just leave a wastewater plant. It's not a big issue. And then the smell would be gone, you know, they could work through it all. But there's, there's stockpiling potatoes there and that was part of the cause of it. So. Now that they got both, 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 um, dryers going, they seem to be keeping up with it. So, hopefully that. And we'll continue to work with them. So. AGI agreement, we replaced the panels, pumps and controls on the main lift station in Green Isle. Along with that, we, we put in an auto transfer switch to tie in the generator. Otherwise, with the I N I, the issues that were there, somebody would have to be there right away to turn power on, you know. If somebody can't get there in a half hour, you're pushing the tap sword back up. So, should automatically start the generator and start pumping. So that, that issue's resolved. We inspected all relief valves in the force main from Arlington to Green Isle. Ended up replacing two valves. That had not been done in a while and that will now be an annual inspection. So make sure, one of them was missing and the other one was failing, but you can rebuild them. So now we can rebuild that one. Should be able to rebuild it ourselves and just swap them out. Stay built, save money. So. And we also, last fall, at the end of the year, we discovered another source of I N I over in Green Isle. With a ball field, where the dugouts are and there's old bathrooms, there was always a drain there. And that, you know, was brought to our attention, well, here that was a drain out of an old bathroom that's no longer there. It was draining a lot of the rainwater that was coming off the, the ball field in between there. Cause they're re, they're redoing the backstop, making a big, yeah. So that, that, that's been, that's been capped, gone. Hopefully, we'll see a lot less of, of the issue over there. It seems over there, there is always such a, a inflow, such a big rush of water and then we've been working on that. I think this is the third thing we've found now. It seems to be going away. So. So that's kind of what I had for last year. We can move on to kind of working on other holes. You know, so. So kind of about the same format here with the water treatment, wait, yeah, water treatment plant. Gritter Construction has it and the subcontractors, I will work with them to, to help coordinate events. I'm gonna be a really stickler on that. I've had a not-so-good experience on another project with Gritter. And um, they're gonna paint that they place and they're gonna paint it marble, as whether they like it or not. Cause when it's done, it better look good. Cause they did that on a plant and it looks, it were, it was done in two thousand and seven, it don't look right. There's no reason why. So, I'm not putting on enough paint, cutting corners. So, they may not like it. So. And during the process, we'll try our best to continue to produce the highest quality water that we can possibly do. We set up where they can't take down all the cells. They can only take down two cells at a time. So we can always treat the water and we'll have to just work around backwashing and. And that's kind of our goals on there. It's gonna be a year-long project. Nothing's really started yet. Got a couple of the subcontractors have been. We've um ripped apart the aeration tower and did a thorough inspection. So they can order all the right pieces for, they're putting together all the asgills for everything and. Doors, windows, everything's been measured up and so it's gonna be replaced and. So hopefully when this starts, I'm sure we'll wait till it gets warmer, all, with the terrible good stuff in. So, yeah, but. Yeah, by year from now, it'll be looking really good. We should be done. Really, yeah. So, we'll have tours. So, uh, wastewater plant, we're getting bids to replace the doors and windows on the control building when the plant was done in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen. That was never addressed. The window sills are rotting and the doors are rusting out. I have one estimate, we're waiting for another estimate and then we'll discuss it from there. So. Um, installation of that Trilob blower. Yeah, we figured that it should reduce electrical cost by thirty percent from where we were at before we had the energy audit, which is significant if they're out there. When we originally went from the front blowers to the back, if you remember, we, we were able to reduce twenty thousand dollars a year off the electrical cost cause the plant was so overly built. It just, it was just a waste. So, we can turn this way down and, you know, and then just sit, I, you know, running slow, not taking a lot of amps. So, it'll pay out in the long run. Yep, anyways, we're gonna change out the LED lights to reduce electrical cost. And we, we're getting quotes and prices and we wanna look at repairing some of the bad areas of tar inside the fence and the driveway to the fence. It's all crumbled. So. Um, also in the plant, biological phosphorus removal. I want to continue to manipulate the process to remove phosphorus without the use of the chemicals. Last year, we only used about two hundred gallons of chemicals and we are well below the limit. So, whatever I'm doing, I'm doing good out there with it. So. I don't know, we're getting a good, a decent organic load from Northland and that's what's helping it. But we're way low on it. So. Um, yeah, yeah. And that process is also affected by I N I. So if we start getting a really heavy, wet year, we'll have to. I mean, we always manage it, we test it weekly, but in, you know, at last resort, you're gonna have to use chemical to keep it down. So. But like I said, we can let it slide a little bit, cause our average is way down there. We do a one-year rolling average. So. We can run it a little higher if we have to and save on the chemicals. But if we keep it done, I mean, we have to keep it down, we have to be compliant. But we got room. So. Um, AGI agreement, we're gonna continue to schedule meetings to include Green Isle and the operations of the wastewater plant. That was kind of not done before. And group had not met for years, you know, and so it's, it's been a good thing. Although we couldn't get a lot of this stuff done. Amy's been a great player in this, getting this going and, and organizing stuff and where the budget's at, where the money's at. And with that, we're able to do a lot of things. It's, it's been a great help. So. Cause like I said, that thing was dead in the water and everybody at that time was pointing fingers at each other and this and that, man of all rights and that. We had some meetings and did some work on it and found out that wasn't the case, you know. So, that, that's good. Miles Hall's program, we want to add another sixty acres to the site that farmed by William Sethker. Currently, there are two sites. He wants to combine them, two sites together. And then we would have two big sites. So then we won't have to worry about down the road having to overplay on these sites, you know. So. That's kind of what we got going on there. I'm gonna get that, once the ground is thawed out, I can get soil samples and I gotta do the whole application process, send it into the M P C A. And I gotta notify the township and area residents and the certain area affected and then it'll be a thirty-day comment period on it. And after that, then it will become a certified site. It'll be the area south of the driveway, all the way down to the gravel road. So, like you said, it's a sixty-acre site. So. Inflow, I N I, inflow infiltration. Continue to educate residents on I N I, some pumps, drain tiles. Gotta remember, Green Isle plays a, a miss too, you know, you know. So, that's why we're trying to track, where's it coming from and where do we need to start looking, you know? Like I said, we, we find stuff here, we find stuff there. Every little bit helps. You know, and we, we, we've got work orders. We continue monitoring sewer caps at the fairgrounds, make sure they're on every month. I've had a couple talks through them last year. Oh yeah, we just got that. Okay, I wanna make sure you're back on. I went out and looked and made sure and they were back on.
We put one right after fair.
Yep, but you know, see, it's working. That's what we want. And, and um, and we also have work orders. We want, we take a walk around down by the river, river creek down there and we inspect all their manholes. We've had one time, or twice, and they, one, when the ring got moved off and we were draining the creek and one time the cover got blown off. So. Had issues on that one's gonna resolve, but we have monthly work orders to go take a walk and check them out, make sure that we're not getting the water from that into the wastewater plant. And like I said, we'll continuing inform council, where I N I concerned within the city, what we find, what we discover. So. So at the bottom there, I kind of put some numbers together, percent of what, kind of how you can see all the dry years and wet years. I haven't done this since two thousand seventeen, so kind of left off there. So in two thousand twenty-one, we had twenty-eight inches of rainfall. I took the total of the water pumps from Arlington, Green Isle versus, added them together versus the wastewater here. And that's what we come up with, twenty, twenty percent, twenty point eight percent of the water, it went through the wastewater plant was groundwater. That number can be deceiving. It does include hydrant flushing, but if you start taking all that out, it's just a guide of something to compare the years. Cause that, that percentage would go up, you know. So, because in twenty, twenty twenties, there was thirty-four inches of rain. You know, twenty-seven point seven percent of the water. Then in two thousand nineteen was a real wet year. We had a lot of flooding in town, forty-eight inches of rainfall. Sixty-three point four percent of the water was raining on that. So, there's work to do. You can see how it goes away when it's dry, you know. So. Two thousand eighteen, forty inches, forty-eight percent. Two thousand seventeen, thirty-four inches, forty-one percent. And it just follows right along how much rain you get. So, so there's work to be done. Yeah, like a five-year average is forty and a half percent, twenty-one percent. So. But the plant handles it. And then if you can scroll up, you can still chart if you go up one paging. I did for the whole year, you can see the, the, the water from the Green Isle Lift Station and what goes through the Arlington Wastewater Plant. They still mirror each other. Even how long we've had that meter in there, two years now? We've got two years of data and that's something. How they're just, they just mirror each other and how, so, yeah. But it's getting lower. The road projects, they help out a lot. I think the, the Clinton Avenue project was a huge project, separating out that storm line in there. I think that there was a storm line that was hooked in, plus it was undersized. So then there was a little pounding out there onto the people's houses, that water was getting in. It's been a lot better. We haven't had any issues over there. Well, we'll find out on the wet year, but so far, so good. So.
There's also two larger pumps put in right at that lift station that, by the, by the high school.
Yep, but I'm talking on the other side of town. Yeah, where they had issues. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we rehabbed that lift station the year before and, and we'll continue as we need with it, you know, as of ages and stuff, we'll have a plan together and redo it. So. But that's, that's my report. So, got any questions?
Three wells are in it.
There's three wells and the city has two of them. So. There's one that's got, that was a, what would you say, from, originally was a, between, uh, originally went with Big Stone and, and the city of Arlington and Santa Claus. Well, number three is in the city park, but Northland thinks they have control over that and hasn't been ran for a lot of years. So. We're, we've been working with that, not getting it watered. So. It'd be nice, I know we've talked about the city, but it should take that well over and use it. It's not being used, that's a waste. So, you know. Has that well been run? Started like, how? We, they pulled all the controls out of it over at the plant and I got a, I got a controller for it. The first one never lit up, it worked. So they sent me another one. So it's the same thing. So there's a different issue. So we're gonna have to get, or they, if they wanna pay for all this, they'll get electrician in here and figure out why it won't come on. Cause you need that to start it and stop it. And it's on a variable speed drive. It turns it up and down, ramps it up, ramps it down. You could set whatever speed on it and. Well, and that, that one is valuable if we'd ever have a wa- a well go down, right? I mean, it's, could be used. Yep. Years ago, the city used to pay all the water appropriations on that, you know, whenever whatever water they used. And that stopped when I started here, when they got sold. So, but. Questions for Lee?
Is that a topic that the, uh, I don't know if that would be the Green Isle or the, what, what do we call it, AGI? Is that?
Yeah. AGI, right.
Would that be something that, although that's kind of the agreement between the two of them, but where would we, where would we discuss, you know, looking at what it would take to, or if it was worthwhile to take that well back over?
That would be just us though, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that would be just us.
So it's water, it's water.
Yeah, it could be water.
So the wells are.
Yeah. So it would just be the wells.
The well, the well would just be a city issue. Yeah. So.
Does um, People's Service have a, um, uh, uh, extended C I P for what's coming up? I mean, you guys, you guys are doing a great job, you know, assessing and telling us what we need. Do you have something that's built out?
Um, Greg.
Like in ten years, we'll need X and then.
Greg was saying that they're just doing CPI plus one right now. They just started doing that a few years ago. So, however, whatever it is, that's what they're doing because for so many years, it has not gone up. We, you know, there's been no real increases on it. So.
Well, like a capital improvement planner or whatever, right?
Oh yeah, we can do with the city. Yep, yep.
For us to. For us to help budget a little bit with these projects that are coming up or that are far, far out there.
Yep. Yep, yep. And that's what we've been doing. Amy sits down with me every year and then we, we go through kind of what we need on the short term and what we start planning for. You know, it's been, it's been working very well. You know, like, like we're talking about these doors, windows and, and that and.
And the tar.
The tar and, yeah, we're trying to look down the road, you know, of equipment. Right now, everything's, you know, the worst is a lot with water treatment plant being the worst water plant we've ever done in two thousand and fourteen. It's sitting pretty good yet, you know. I mean, with the updates that have been done. So.
Well, we just got a huge surprise with the water, you know, treatment plant. So, that, that was my two cents on it.
Yeah, I think we're looking at.
Big, longer projects, like maybe twenty years out even. Not just in your five years, what we can kind of see, but further out.
Mm-hmm.
You know, anticipating. It's easier to budget for those things now than it is.
Right.
A two million dollar project in five years even.
Right. Well, and things change, you know, of course, and there's a lot of, you know, population and stuff and you outgrow your facilities. I mean, yeah, I could see that happening in Green Isle with all the housing going on over there. You know, so, mm-hmm. But, yeah, definitely there should be some, something for planning into the future because, yeah, twenty, thirty years of the equipment's wore out, it's time for upgrades, you know. So.
Right. So, I mean, that, that's something that I think I would like to see.
Right, right. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
If, if you guys can work on something like that to bring back to the council so we can plan.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay. Thanks, Lee.
Yep, thank you.
Appreciate it. Item ten, Planning and Zoning Annual Report. Phil Angus. Hello, Phil.
Hello. All right. I'll keep this brief for you guys since that was pretty long. So, um, as you look, we had a pretty, pretty much, let's go dive right into additional items like addressed. It was a pretty active year for a lot of things that were going on in the city. There was not much that, um, like for ordinance and application wise, anything serious. We did have a rezoning for, it was the, um, Huff property. Over in the right corner, as you see on the, uh, map right there, that was zoned from R A to I one. Um, we had two variance requests, one for a detached garage and another for a attached garage. So those are the major things. Um, and we did, few major things that P and Z also did. We did create a administrative exception policy that did, that did help streamline the variance process. We also, um, with, I had a discussion on the creation of chapter thirty-two of the city code that helped more or less clarify the permitting process for people, uh, for residents to help them better understand what they would need to do for a permit and things like that, also to cover ourselves. So, in case anyone starts doing work without a permit, we have the capability of issuing a stop work order for that. And then I did add one slight addition after conversation with the committee. Um, when it comes to our two thousand twenty-two planning goal, uh, planning and zoning goals, I did also add, as you see in the packet in front of you, um, review city ordinances. This is something that, uh, the committee has decided that with, obviously with the council's, uh, blessing that we will do and move forward for. And going off that, our goal is mainly for this year is to update the comprehensive plan, update the zoning code to maintain consistency with the comprehensive plan, work on orderly annexation process, update the zoning map and as I stated, review the city ordinances. So, does anyone have any, um, questions?
We are, we have two vacant spots on the planning and zoning.
Correct, yes. We still have two vacant spots.
That's either watching this on YouTube or in the audience knows of anyone that might be interested in serving on planning and zoning. There are two vacancies on that, in that committee. So.
All right. All right.
Thanks, Phil. E D A Annual Report.
EDA annual report, Kurt Bank.
Okay, um, I will keep this brief as well, we had a very productive year. And, uh, I'll just go over a couple of the main points, you do have the report in your packet, so if you have any questions. Obviously, the big event was Data Metal Craft coming to town, and Amy worked so hard on it, she got three grants for Data Metal Craft. Uh, we're all excited. For that company to come to town and create all those jobs, um, there's a grand opening in, in A Town Tavern, and they do have a loan through our EDA. That is remarkable, a bar restaurant like that opening up during COVID. Um, there's a seven million dollar expansion project that's got equipment, and I know the city helped out with, uh, moving a line, I can't remember if it was waters who were.
Stormwater.
Stormwater. Um, EDA sold the nickel property to Tony Hough, he does have one building up, and he has plans to put up a few others. Dave Seiwich began construction on four dot eight rental villas out by the fairgrounds. Initial Patel purchased the Hannon property, kind of down by friends apart by prep cabinets, and plans to build thirty rental units there. First time ever, we've always talked about it, we put all our programs on a brochure and available to every business. So no business can say, they have no clue about the, what programs the EDA offers. Um, EDA wrote a grant for the dog park, continues to give donations for the dog park. Um, we began work and discussion on the County Road one sixty six extension project. And you'll see our list of goals for two thousand twenty two, so. That's real quick, cause I know you have a long meeting, so I don't know if you have any questions, get the packets in there, the, uh, reports in your packet. But we had a very productive year, got a lot of things done, a lot of good things happening in Arlington. And, uh, shout out to the members on our committee, council members, Matt and Sharpie, and Joe Morgan just got appointed. And Tim Kleckel, Howie Gregman, Larry Sorensen, and, and Dean Bergerson. Any questions?
Just, uh, about the dog park, I think that was one of our target, uh, things for this year.
Was both working on it, should get done.
Yeah, so just so that people are aware, obviously, there's been a lot of public support for it, I mean, the donations are really, uh, flying in for that, so.
Yeah. Yep.
Hopefully that gets.
We're hoping in the spring, uh, I think the grant has to be closed out June first or something like that. Any other questions? Can the new homes, uh, continue to pop up, so that's good to.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks, Kurt, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item twelve, January revenue report.
Those are in your packet, it's very early on, so we've only, we only have a little bit of revenue and expenditure is the next one. I guess, let me know if you have any questions on those.
Anything?
No, you'll see some of the, the big ones on the expenditure jump out because we've made bond payments.
Outstanding, yeah. Bond payments, yep. Mm-hmm. Okay, anything on that? Let's move on to the investment report, January investment report.
And that was also in your packet, let me know if you have any questions, we did have a CD come due, I have to talk to the bank about that, uh, matured on February fifteenth. Interest rates are obviously down, so anytime I've renewed any of our CDs, it's very difficult to get the same rate they were at.
And you continue to do a short term rate?
Yeah. Okay.
We kind of have them spread out.
Any questions? Any questions on the investment report? Police department report.
You'll find the police department. Report from Denley in the packet, I guess, let me know if you have any questions, this was sent over from the police department, obviously, very low numbers for January, I think the lowest we have seen.
And nine one one hangups is probably the highest. I, I don't know if that was.
Come on, that you.
Hopefully it wasn't five separate places, but I don't know.
Any questions on the police report? All right, move, move ahead to, uh, resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty two. It's a resolution authorizing issuance of the, uh, bonds for the water treatment plant. And Shannon, welcome aboard.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor members of the council, Shannon Sweet from David Brown Associates, a little over a month ago, uh, the council set. About to issue bonds for the water treatment plant project, uh, we have total project costs, uh, about two million, seven thousand dollars, including finance costs. We're applying nine hundred thousand dollars in cash reserves that the city has for the project. And borrowing the balance of one million, one hundred and five thousand dollars over a term of twenty years. We set about on a competitive sale process, meaning we prepared an offering document, we purchased a credit rating from Standard and Poor's. We also got a credit enhancement from the state of Minnesota, because it's a utility project, meaning the state of Minnesota will step in. And on a limited basis, make debt service payments if the city fails to do so. And that typically garners us a little bit better interest rate for a program fee of five hundred dollars, so it generally provides good value. Uh, staff was required to participate in the management call with Standard and Poor's. Uh, you did an excellent job of preparing for that call and answering questions, and there was very little follow up, so it was uneventful. Ultimately, the city was, uh, had their double A minus credit rating affirmed, which for a community your size is an excellent credit rating. Um, and they gave it a stable outlook, they assigned an outlook, whether it's stable or negative, hopefully, and a stable outlook is what we were looking for. So we thought that was an excellent result. Uh, this morning was when we took bids and handed out this bid tabulation form, I believe it's. And we asked, ultimately, we received three bids, uh, Northland Securities, Robert W. Baird and company are typical bidders. We typically only see United Bankers Bank when they're working with a local bank on the purchase of bonds, in this instance, they're working with Arlington State Bank. Who submitted the low bid at two point three five six seven percent. If you'll note, the Robert W. Baird, Northland Securities bids are about twenty five basis points or a quarter of a percent above that amount. And so we felt that that was an excellent bid, and in our evaluation of current market conditions, they're much closer to the Robert W. Baird, Northland Securities bids, and so we. Uh, are, uh, fully behind recommending the award of sale to United Bankers Bank. Uh, the net interest rate, uh, of two point three five six seven percent was above what we had initially projected. We've seen, we were at about two point oh nine percent, I believe, when we started this process. Uh, we've seen interest rates move by about a half percent, and so we think again, for that reason, this is a very competitive proposal submitted by United Bankers Bank with Arlington State Bank. Bond council's prepared an award resolution, uh, that was updated with the results of low bid in your packet, and we do recommend approval of that resolution. Or they happy to answer questions on the process or the bids received.
The resolution filed or?
I do, I thought it here, did, uh.
Resolution authorizing issuance, awarding sale, describing the form and details and providing for payment of, um, general money of dollar.
Okay. What is the amount, is there a amount to be filled in then on the resolution?
One million, one hundred and five thousand.
There's some copies in from Shannon with the fill in information.
One million, one oh five.
General obligations, water revenue bonds, series. Twenty twenty two A.
Did you, you're making that, you're introducing that, all right.
They're just, yeah.
Second.
That's John.
Yep.
Motion by Councilmember Batch, or second by Councilmember Thomas, actually, uh, introduction of resolution fifteen dash twenty twenty two. Resolution authorizing issuance, awarding sale, describing the form and details and providing for the payment of, uh, one million, one hundred and five thousand, general obligation, water revenue bonds, series two zero two two A. For the discussion. Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Batch.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yep.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Sharpie.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Uh, resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty two, resolution approving the application for lawful gambling permit. This is for the Sibley County Agricultural Association, I believe, I believe it's a bingo.
Bingo event in May at the fair, I think that's correct.
Bingo event.
I'll introduce resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty two, resolution, uh, allowing the lawful gambling permit at Sibley County Agri- Agricultural Association.
Second.
Resolution sixteen dash twenty twenty two, introduced by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Batch. It is a resolution approving the application for lawful gambling permit for the Sibley County Agricultural Association. Questions? Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Batch.
Yes.
Councilmember Sharpie.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, that resolution is passed. Okay, item, uh, resolution eighteen. Dash twenty twenty two, resolution amending mayoral appointments and committees. This comes about, uh, due to, uh, appointment of the, uh, new city council member and appointing him to various. Committee positions, and, uh, then just cleaning it up, there were a few minor errors in the first time we, uh, we did this on the, uh, early in January. So, this should be it.
I'll introduce our resolution eighteen dash twenty twenty two, a resolution amending mayoral appointment and committees.
Second.
Resolution eighteen dash twenty twenty two, introduced by Councilmember Sharpie, second by Councilmember Morgan, and that is a resolution amending mayoral appointments and committees. Questions? Not, vote by roll call, Councilmember Sharpie.
Yes.
Councilmember Thomas.
Yes.
Councilmember Meyer.
Yes.
Councilmember Batch.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none opposed, resolution is adopted. All right, I think, uh, let's see, we're down to item twenty two. On your new business is, I assume there's no unfinished business, you had a, uh, something you wanted to bring up, Councilmember Morgan, we'll take that up, uh, after item twenty three. Item twenty two, discussion of section seven point six, emergency, personnel response time. City administrator?
This needs to be discussed before we can offer a conditional offer to Luke Ellenson, he was the top candidate, uh, last week. And, um, he lives in Jordan and he would like to continue living in Jordan, and right now, that's out of the twenty minute response time. He bought a new house about a year ago, he said, and he would like to continue to live in Jordan. I also wanted to update Council Joel Nagel, who was the other finalist, has withdrawn his application, he is pursuing something else, and he is not interested any longer.
So this is just open for discussion, um.
Yeah.
I'll throw my personal comment, and I think if, uh, you know, we, it's, it's pretty obvious, we need to make a choice here, or make a change here if we want to, uh. Have this individual serve as our police chief. I know this, back, when I, when I got on as mayor, twenty, I think the twenty minute time was, was that increased maybe?
It was increased to twenty minutes.
Yeah, increased to twenty minutes.
It was less than.
My feeling on it, for your consideration, is, uh, if, if that individual is here on duty during the daytime, the, uh, re- response time means nothing. If he is, uh, twenty minutes away, if we leave this and someone is twenty minutes away, they can't make it, which doesn't apply to this situation. After twenty minutes has elapsed, likely, middle of the night, um, sheriff's department's gonna be here, any local patrol officers will be here. So, uh, again, I, I think if we, I think we need to seriously consider, uh, changing that response time. To, so that it, uh, allows our top candidate to, uh, to accept a position.
So does the police, police chief, um, have on-call hours?
Yes.
He does, or she, whatever it would be.
Yes.
They have on-call hours?
Yes.
So what percentage of their time is on-call?
Depends who's on vacation, Andrew would do on-call hours on the weekends often, if no one was on duty.
I know at one point in our packet, we did, is we had a police officer that was living, um, further away, and they would just stay during their on-call hours. Um, at the, at the building down there, there's a bed and stuff like that, as far as they use for ambulance, right, that would use to stay.
There's another bed in the police department now, it's a holdout couch.
I mean, the, probably very limited, if we only have two, uh, patrol officers, um, vacation time, I don't know how much. Vacation time they have, but it'd be limited, if those are the only times that he would be. Taking that on-call time. But, I mean, if we say police, that, that means if we ever hire another police officer, they can live twenty minutes away as well.
Correct, or thirty.
Uh?
Or thirty, if you're changing it to thirty.
Thirty, I wonder if it would settle down.
Or whatever it may be, fair.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's not ideal, but I don't know what else you do. You know, so here we've got someone that, uh, you know, we'd really like to join. And, uh, they just happen to live in Jordan, so. I mean, ideally, I mean, last time when we hired Andrew, I mean, we, we covered some, uh, living expenses in order to move, and, and that was based on, you know, basically coming and joining our. Community, which is, the ideal situation for a small town is that you would want your police chief to, you know, be a part of your community. You're just looking at the applicants, you know, they, they were typically living a little ways away from their community.
I mean, doesn't he have a seventeen year old son, that's probably a big part of it, he wants to finish school.
That's probably a major one, yeah. Yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah. Yeah, I'm just vocalizing, you know.
Yep.
Clearly, it's, it, I wouldn't consider it to be ideal, but I don't know that we're gonna get. Every single person to move to our community and, and, you know, be embedded in it, um.
What kind of a response time would be reasonable, and how long is it, how long does it take to get from here to your?
Well, I actually drive through Jordan every day, and, I mean, I could get to Lakeville in forty minutes. But, so, to me, I almost consider Jordan halfway from where I'm going. So truly, he probably could make it here in twenty, but I think we'd have to raise it to thirty to be.
Do you follow like a ten or a fifteen over rule, or what are you?
I'm not gonna answer that. I'm just saying, but there's back roads you could take and stuff as well, I usually drive through Blakely.
Luke said thirty minutes.
Yeah.
That would take him thirty minutes.
Forty minutes? He must not have saved. I mean, for me, I'm, I'm fine with a thirty minute response. And moving forward.
Well, what happens if there's an emergency at your house? At your house?
At my house?
Sheriff comes, yeah.
Or I could care about it.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, a thirty-minute response, that seems, I mean, I know when we upped it to twenty, that seemed really like a lot. If, if you're the one that's having the mer- the emergency, that's a forever. That's forever.
Right, but there's gonna be other responders responding as well, right?
Well, yes, and we could be all the way over on, on the other side of the county. Right? Well, I mean, you don't know.
You don't know that.
They're not positioned in places, correct?
I agree, they're not, they're not, I understand that. But, I would think he would be professional enough and, you know, put, put, and, and work with us and we work with him and figure out the best solution to, so that we have a decent response time, and I think he'll, you know, he seems like a guy that'll work with it.
Well, there's a total of three officers too, so, I mean, granted, you know, the on-call is the cover part, and I think you brought up some valid points about having someone stay. I don't know if that's something that every person's gonna be interested in, you know, while they're having that, stay away from their family.
Well, he's the chief, he can also adjust what the on-call looks like and maybe adjust schedules or whatever too, so it wouldn't be
Yeah.
Be that necessary, right? Or we know that so-and-so's gonna be off this weekend, do you mind working two weekends and then just kinda, you know, trying to cover?
Yes.
I mean, that, in, in his position, that he, he would have the ability to adjust scheduling, or we're gonna have to.
Sure, sure. But that's part of what Matt had said, you know, as well, that he could, he'd work with it.
Well, I mean, work with what, thirty minutes, or with, with what we have?
You know, work, work with, making sure that the city's covered one way or the other. I mean, we're still, if he's gotta come from Jordan, let's say, you know, we have something major going on, we have somebody in town, we already have an officer in town, but he needs to be there too, you know, that's where, I don't know, I'm not sure what the twenty, twenty, thirty-minute response time really means. You know, I would assume if he's on-call, there's already somebody here, we don't have, we're not, unless it's during off-hours too, is that what we're saying during?
So, so the on, so the on-call would be, nobody's on duty, there's no patrolman on duty, and if there's a call, that patrolman or who's ever on, on-call would have to respond. Right, so it's nothing, but you're on-call. So, it's not like, I'm a, I'm a patrolman and you're on-call, I'm at home right in town.
I get it, I get it. But do we wanna lose more, over ten minutes?
Do you wanna lose a family member over ten minutes? Or something else?
Well, if it's, if it's, it's, if you're talking police emergency, twenty minutes is already too long anyways.
Absolutely.
Right.
So, what's the difference? I mean.
Well, I, I, I mean, I would see us, okay, I call nine-one-one, I got an emergency, you know, the dispatch is gonna know that they're, you know, calling someone on-call, they're gonna make a judgment based on the call and get who's ever the quickest. So, if that means it's Sibley County Sheriff, or Highway Patrol, or, you know, who knows what, um, they would go after the person that's the closest. Meanwhile, this, this person's en route to, you know, come essentially
And it's.
take over the situation.
And, and plus, it's, it's how he sets the department up. He could set it up so he's never on-call if he wants to.
Except to, exactly, and that's my point, so.
But that's for him to run the department.
But if that's the case, then, then why do we have to change this? Or, why don't, I mean, another thought that came to my mind, if, if he's gonna be on-call and he know that, and he knows that it's gonna be all over long, can we make sure that Sibley County, that we pay for Sibley County to?
I do pay for Sibley County.
You know, but.
I do, every year. It's half of my taxes.
But wouldn't that be for the chief to work out with Sibley County? Cause he said he's gonna have a working relationship with the local departments and stuff.
This is a, I, I think I'm just throwing out there, absolutely, right? I, I really do not want to change this. I don't want to lose him, but I think that we have options that, that are available without changing this.
I think we're getting, we're getting, I think we're getting down to the minutia here.
The least, well, I.
I mean, it's like, okay, are we gonna tell him how to run the department too? I mean, that's sort of where I think we're heading. And I think it's about, do you trust the guy? I think that's what it comes down to, to me. Do you trust him to do the right things?
Well, I, I have.
And I think we already.
I have confidence in him, I, I really, I mean, otherwise, I probably wouldn't have voted for him. And, and went that way. That, that's not even a thing.
I know, but that's sort of where, where I'm looking at this, is, you know, we can micromanage that, you know, the heck out of this, or we can.
That's the point where I'm saying, uh, you know, I agree, it's not ideal, but we're faced with,
Yeah.
I don't know what the other option is. Do we get, do we, but we, do we take a candidate that, that didn't make the final cut to come and be interviewed by us, because, you know.
Just because they live closer?
Yeah, or they're willing to.
Do we, do we table this part until he's got, you know, on the job, and then we discuss it with him on how we can make things work out? You know, work with him on it.
But that's part of his contract, isn't it?
Yeah, that's, to me, then.
Yeah, he's not gonna give up a twenty, whatever, three-year, seven-year job to come here with the unknowns about his living quarters. Unfortunately, I mean, I wouldn't. But again, so, there was, what, there was six or seven applicants originally? I mean, we saw two that were very qualified. I mean, everybody, you know, was, I think, blown away from, from the two that, that we moved forward. And the one that was offered, or were basically trying to move forward on, was, you know, had the highest score. So then we take something less, just so that they'll live in the town, is sort of the challenge that you have.
I don't expect him to live in town.
Well, within.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I don't know, I guess.
Within.
You couldn't live too far away for twenty minutes.
Within, you know, fifteen miles.
I think we're gonna leave it in the contract. I mean, it, it should be something that's reasonably close to his situation. In other words, increasing it to thirty, otherwise, maybe we just wanna take it out, leave it up to his discretion. I don't know.
I'm open to either one.
If he gets, if he gets a call, he knows he's gotta get here right away anyhow.
I mean, we have to trust his judgment. I, I'd, I just feel we're getting, we're getting down to, we're just getting in the weeds big time here to, to, to micromanage, which I feel if we're gonna micromanage him, I wouldn't take the job if I was him.
I wouldn't micromanage him.
Well, one other thought, uh, you know, we're talking about the chief position, and with, uh, communication technology being the way it is, you know, if he, uh, is being called on to supervise an emergency situation, he can do it remotely. Uh, you know, as long as there's an officer physically here to, uh, you know, take, uh, charge physically of the, of the scene. But I think there still should be some response time, uh, so that the, uh, well, or maybe instead of phrasing it in terms of so many minutes, it would be a reasonable period of time after he's called, you know, leave it somewhat vague and then see how it works out. But, the idea would be, uh, if he's required to have some kind of physical response, uh, to a scene in Arlington, the idea is that, you know, wh- while he can communicate technologically with the officers on the scene, there may be things that he can be more effective in his supervisory role by being actually here. You know, to observe the scene, or the, uh, disposition of the, uh, suspects, you know, things like that, so. Okay, well, what do we wanna do? If we, uh, if we vote to offer a contract to, uh, Mr. Ellenson, we have to let city administrator Newsom know what needs to be in that contract.
Was it already offered to him and he responded to that, or what?
No.
No, I just talked to him about some of his, what he's looking for in the salary, some things that I could work on a draft with him. And that was a big one.
It, it, it doesn't say anything about responding in person here.
No, it does not.
So.
So what Ross said is.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying, so, I mean, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the, or approve the conditional offer of employment to Ellenson as a police chief. And I believe, well, I'm open to changing the wording, but as far as I see, he's just required to respond, so he could, that could be a phone call, it could be a team's call. It doesn't say he has to be there in person right now, so I think it's fine as listed. But if we wanna change it, I'd be open to that, but that's my motion.
Your motion is to leave it as is?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
To leave it as is.
To leave it as, yes, yep.
Is it certain right now?
Yep.
We'll second it.
Motion by councilmember Thomas, second by councilmember Batchor, to leave the wording, um, in the contract as far as response time. Leave it the way it is right now, and offer that in the contract to him. I wanna get
Yeah, I'm a little concerned he's not going to.
Emmy Newsom's opinion on this, is that, is that gonna be a turnoff? I mean, he's gonna ask, what about the twenty, twenty mi- uh, minute response time?
He's gonna ask me again. I actually had put together a personnel committee, um, he has some other things I wanna discuss with the personnel committee on regarding his contract. Because he's also asking for, I'll say, he's asking for the highest salary right now, and the ability to take the squad car home to turn harnessing as well.
Right, yep, I heard about that too.
So, there are several factors in his contract.
Yeah, that one would be a problem for me. Especially with the distance of driving. I mean, essentially, it's, uh, you know, free gas to, and mileage for that entire way, so.
So, we're gonna talk about that.
Yeah.
Good.
I'm just vocalizing it, cause I was already thinking about that, that's kind of a.
One concern I had about that was insurance coverage, but the league confirmed to us that that situation, taking the squad car home is fairly common nowadays, and it would be covered under our league insurance. So that at least is not a concern, but there may be, well, be other concerns, as you just mentioned.
Yeah, I think it's, not that we need to dive into it here.
No, no.
No, that's not, that's why I scheduled a personnel committee. We need to talk about it there.
Okay, there's a motion by Thomas, second by Batchor, to leave the twenty-minute response time, uh, as is. More discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no?
I'm gonna say no. I don't think he's gonna accept it with the way it's written. Just a side note, something that came up based on what was displayed, was the eight minutes, it says fire and ambulance in eight minutes, and I shared it, but there's a feeling that that's not correct for the fire department, and I think it needs to be addressed.
Doug and I have talked about it, it's not on the agenda tonight, so Doug and I need to do some more homework on that one.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that vote then was four to one, and it's, uh, passed, so the twenty minutes will remain in for now. With other items to be discussed by the personnel committee. Going on to item twenty-three, approved deny conditional offer of employment to Luke Ellenson for position of chief of police. Offers contingent upon successful background, physical and psychological evaluation.
Well, do we table this until the negotiations are at a point where?
No, we, we have to begin the psyche eval and the background check, and then you'll approve the contract only after all of these things are done.
Yeah, so we have one more.
So, that gives us time to negotiate a contract with the chief.
I'll make a motion to approve the offer of employment to Luke Ellenson for the position of chief, please.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Batchor, second by councilmember Thomas, to approve the offer of employment, uh, conditional offer of employment to Luke Ellenson for position of chief of police. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, no? Motion carried unanimously. Councilmember Morgan, you wanted to, this item, I said, let's put it in new business.
Oh, um.
Please speak to that, if you would.
Yeah, so, clearly, we heard some of the feedback, uh, today, and I think, I think based on the feedback, that that's, that would be best suited for, um, the personnel committee to take a, take a look into that situation. I don't hope anybody else has any.
I, in my opinion, I think the council should take a look at it, and if it's gonna be some kind of, um, information where it has to be a closed meeting, because there's, uh, certain information that's gonna be involved in that meeting, then I would say, I would do that, but, um, I think that's something that the whole council should be aware of what's going on, not to.
And I agree, I just, I think that it's, I think that it's a, it's a closed meeting, uh, setting.
And.
That's why I was referring to the personnel committee.
So.
Those are open meetings, though, to the public. Every meeting is an open meeting, to the public. Yes. Unless it's a closed meeting, right, Ross?
Uh, personnel committee just has, it does not have a quorum of.
I was gonna say, I, I.
They can't vote, but it's an open meeting, isn't it?
Yeah. I won't, you know, I won't.
Every, every committee meeting is an open meeting.
So, if you're talking about disciplinary action on an employee, you're telling me that that's an open meeting?
No, that, that's a closed meeting.
Okay.
Yes, but, uh.
I guess, I've not seen anybody in the personnel committee, and, and, I mean, we're talking different things, that's where my mind sits, that that's.
A closed meeting.
That would be a closed meeting.
And, I mean, have we reached out to any of the retirees or resigned members as far as the, uh, exit interview?
Exit interview?
If they're interested? We were, that was voted on.
Right, so in, you know, number twenty-four and then number twenty-five, I was gonna raise my hand and actually talk about exit, um, interviews.
I didn't mean to jump in front of you.
No, no, you were first, that's fine, but since you brought it up, I guess my thought is, is that, you know, we should maybe come up with a plan on how we go about doing that.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to reach out to the candidates and ask them if they're interested or not, and then if they are, you know, do they want an open meeting or closed meeting, what, what do they prefer? So we can have the discussion.
Um, if, speaking of, of that specifically, what, what I would like to see is, I would like to see, um, whoever, uh, or the mayor, right, write the letter or, or have it, I don't know, I guess, from him and from the council, reaching out to employees that need. And that way, it comes back to the mayor, to the council for review. You know, as well as the department heads, they think we can get valuable information as far as why people are needing and stuff, but, you know, like Kurt mentioned today, it's kinda a little too late, you know?
To what?
If there's things, well, if things are going on, the exit interviews are sure gonna give us a lot of data that we could use maybe for the future, but it doesn't fix if anything was.
But you aren't gonna know what's going on if you don't ask.
Exactly, exactly.
So.
That's why.
I know exactly, one of them, he turned fifty, the other one he was gonna retire. I know, we're, we're, we're hung up on this thing, we told the fire department with the issues that we've had. If we wanna do an exit interviews, that's fine.
We voted on it.
I know, and that's fine, I have no problem with doing exit interviews, but I know for a fact that three of them had this was planned. So, whether they come, show up to do an exit interview or not, he said, the one I talked to said, I don't know if I need one or not. So, but we make the offers to them, and then if they decide to come, we come, if not.
Right, cause they can, they can glean, we can glean information off of, you know, even if they don't even have a problem, but at least we can glean information off of what happened.
And it's, and, and I'm not being specific to this, I brought this up months, months ago about having exit interviews.
Right, we should have, because we, we went through a year of ambulance personnel leaving, we went through a year, uh, we went through a police chief leaving, and we didn't get into, so, all we did was approve it, the resignations, we didn't discuss, all through a discussion like we're going through now.
Yeah, and it's just, yeah, it's essentially just trying to.
Yeah, and it's just, yeah, it's essentially just trying to, you know, get that feedback and, you know, see if there's opportunity there. Clearly, there's, there's gonna be some opportunity to, to do, maybe look at things differently or, um, try to rebuild some trust. I think, I think trust has big impact in some of it, but. Back to the twenty-four.
Yeah, twenty-four.
Um, I think based on the situation and the scenario, everything that was talked about, it's something that needs to be, uh, um, you know, looked into further.
Mm-hmm.
Um, in the right way, and maybe if Ross wants to give us some guidance on that throughout the process, that would be, that would be great. If it's the whole council, I'm, I don't see an issue with that either. I just don't, based on the situation, it's not something that you're, um, I don't see you doing in a public setting.
No, I would agree with that.
I, I really feel on exit interviews, do you think those people really wanna open up to a whole council and be frank about what they have to say, as opposed to if they're, to meet with one or two people?
I don't know, but if we ask, we'll find out.
We'll find out.
Yeah, I think typically, you know, it, it's just, I don't know the way your company does it, but ours, it's, um, you know, someone from HR sits down with them, they got a predetermined list, and it's, you know, ranking your manager, ranking your supervisor, ranking your director. Um, you know, I just went through one that was pretty brutal.
Yep.
Um, but again, it, it allows us to really, you know, look at it.
We, we, we do it just a little bit different, where we give them the questionnaire for them to fill out, and then they sit with HR, go through it, and then, that's how, that's how my company does it, but it's.
Yeah, it could be mailed, it could be, it could be anything, and you have the questions.
Either way, you're, you're getting the feedback. Yep.
They're, you know, in ours, it's a, you know, zero to ten, and they're ranking, you know, the questions. Um, in our case, it's, it's, you know, the HR manager who's, you know, sort of getting some dialogue and taking notes, and then that gets, you know, turned into the area manager and.
Same, same, same type of deal, it's just that the original format is filled out by the employee by themselves, so they feel no pressure. And then that's given to HR, who sits down and goes over it with them.
So when HR sits down with them, it's a one-on-one type thing?
It's a one-on-one, so they can get more detail.
It's not, it's not, it's, it's not me sitting there waiting for that person to tell me that, you know, as a manager, he thinks I'm a five, when, you know, out of ten, right? And that, and that's how you get, you know, I think you get better, you know, you get better feedback, yeah.
Well, and that, and then I guess that's my suggestion, why I feel like it should come from the mayor, you know, and council. Um, you know, that way, it's, you should be, you, you're, you're not a direct supervisor, really.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at our, we reach out for information on, uh, what's that ball, name of that racket ball or that?
Oh, pickleball?
Pickleball thing, right? We sent out a flyer and, and it was just, you know, circle zero to five or whatever it was, and tell me your age and, and whatnot. You know, it could be something that, uh, non-invasive, where they feel comfortable, you know, answering. If you get, if you, you fill room full of people that are, you know, you, you may not get the same, you may not get the same feedback.
What action does the council feel that I as mayor should be taking as far as these last four, uh, resign- resignations?
I think.
Should they be?
I think we just make an offer, are you interested in doing an exit interview, and then.
But we don't have anything, we don't have a pro, we don't have a structure yet for how we're gonna do that. In other words.
Like a piece of paper?
No, no, but I'm saying, okay, if I, if I come back and say, well, these two want to be involved in an exit interview, uh, is it gonna be with the whole council? Is it gonna be open? Is it gonna be closed?
I.
Is it gonna be with the Personnel Committee?
I think we should, we should ask them. I think it should be in front of the whole council. But it could be closed meeting, it doesn't have to be open.
Yeah, it's their choices.
Yes, their choice.
Yeah, their choice as to whether they want it open or not.
And then, you know, I, it would, would be nice to give them something to fill out before they come, but if, I don't think that's necessary. We feel they're gonna be open in front of us, but sometimes people are, you know, get a little intimidated in front of people, so if they could fill, if we could give them something to fill out ahead of time, I think we'd get a little more honesty.
Sure, sure.
But maybe they're not afraid to talk either, if they want, if they wanna come and do an exit interview, I mean.
But we'd certainly have to have some type of format to go with when, you know, questions of some type are.
So we don't want to interview that, or Personnel Committee come up with, cause we don't have any policies in place.
We don't have anything, right.
So come up with a form that they could fill out, which would be the starting point, and if they want to go further on with the exit interview, meet with the full council, we could do that, or they can just fill out the form, give them the options.
Or if they want it to be closed.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be mandatory.
Right.
No, it's, it's, it's.
At all, any of it. I mean, it's just.
I, I don't think it's mandatory either, but, but it, they would get the opportunity to be in front of the council and speak their piece.
To jump in here briefly.
They do have that already though.
I think, I think we're getting a little, little confused about the, uh, open meeting, closed meeting. Uh, you can have a closed meeting only for very limited purposes, one of which is to discuss potential disciplinary investigation or action. But, uh, in the context of the full council meeting with someone for an exit interview, uh, I think that's an open meeting. That doesn't fall under the, uh, very limited exceptions to that rule. Now, it's an open meeting, yes, uh, but, um, you know, I, I guess, the council can control the context to the meeting, uh, and, uh, I'm sure the league has, uh, resources available for the forms and procedures that are used by other cities for this. So, um, you know, if you set up forms and procedures to elicit hopefully honest, uh, uh, response from the retired employee, but still, you know, control, uh, you know, what's being discussed at the meeting, um, I, I think we're okay. Now, if you, if the, uh, uh, meeting, uh, devolves into possible disciplinary investigation, you know, that's, that's where we're, uh, I guess, uh, getting into a potential danger zone where we start with an open meeting and then, oh, whoops, this came out, uh, that really should've been in a closed meeting. I, I'd hate to see that kind of situation develop as city attorney, so, uh, I think we wanna be careful how we structure this. Now, uh, if you just have a one-on-one meeting with, uh, Personnel Committee person and, uh, as an exit interview with a, a retired employee, uh, I don't think that's an open meeting. I agree. I, I understand why, you know, there, there's a, probably a impulse to have the full council sit in on these things. But if you do, I think it's an open meeting.
Plus, if you do, you have a full quorum, if you have a, just the Personnel Committee.
Yeah.
You don't, yeah.
You don't have that.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, one could say that anybody can come in and sit down for a few minutes and share the feedback, right? So, I, I don't believe, my, my take is I don't think it needs to be the whole council. We, we need to create some documents, and if the League of Minnesota can help us with that, that would be great. Maybe they already have the template, we can get these things, you know, you know, whether it's a personal letter or a phone call, just to get, just to get on top of, you know, a few that we just had, and hopefully there aren't, you know, a bunch more coming, but, you know, and then for the future, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, well, this is certainly something that can be discussed further at the Personnel Committee meeting.
Is there a Personnel Committee meeting planned?
Yep.
So, do you think that there would be something coming out of that Personnel Committee meeting, that we have something on our agenda as far as accepting of policy and procedure of our next council meeting?
I don't know, I have to work with the council.
Well, if there's, so if the League of Minnesota has these templates and we're able to get it.
They do not have templates, I, I shared with attorney.
They do not?
It's just, it's just coming up with questions, it's not to.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, just Google exit interviews, and I got billions of questions you could ask, that'd be cool, that we could put towards our scenario or our situation, with each department, or however we wanna do it.
Right.
Well, I think each department is probably unique to itself in a way.
Right, but it's.
Yeah, you try to keep them general, so that way.
But in general.
But the overall is.
The overall, but we're still city employees.
I've shared, I've shared one with the mayor as well.
Mm-hmm, and I forwarded that on to Amy, she has that one, so, yes, yep.
So we can look into it and get it.
Okay. Anything else? Committee updates? Open discussion we just had? Okay, motion is in order to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Sharpie, second by Councilmember Morgan to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no? Meeting adjourned, eight thirteen.